Good morning, everyone. Like to call this special meeting for July twenty fifth, twenty twenty four. If you could please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance and salute to the state flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the Republic of America, with all due justice, one nation, under God, indivisible, where there is diversity and justice for all. Salute the flag, state of New Mexico. See you assembled on perfect furniture among the other colleagues.
Thank you. Moving on to the next item, it's going to be approval of the special meeting agenda.
Second.
So a motion by Commissioner Edwards, second by Commissioner Billings. Do we have any discussion? Seeing on all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Moving on to public input, do we have anyone for public input? Anyone for public input? Okay. Moving on to financial reports, no, skipping that. Moving on to resolutions, consideration of resolution R twenty four, R dash twenty four dash thirty four, adopting the twenty 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 four, twenty twenty five operating budget.
We need a motion to discuss, right? Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion that we pass the operating budget as presented.
Second.
Okay, so a motion by Commissioner Edwards, second by Commissioner Melina, discussion. Go ahead.
Good morning, Chairman Ponse and Cala Commissioners. I have prepared a brief PowerPoint. It's, hopefully it'll be painless, it's about ten, eleven slides. I just want to summarize some of the changes from the preliminary budget to the final budget and just kind of go over why we're here this morning and the purpose. So if you'll allow me to, I'd like to go ahead and get the presentation started. Like I say, I'm trying to make this as painless as possible. I've been in final budget adoptions and we've had a break for lunch and come back, so it won't be that long, I promise. New Mexico statutes annotated nineteen seventy eight requires local public bodies to furnish and file with the Department of Finance and Administration, DFA, local government decision, division, a proposed annual budget for the fiscal year, and the proposed preliminary budget was submitted on June first, and we are here for final budget adaption, which requires a budget, the budget revisions for the final, a resolution, supporting schedules, and of course, the fourth quarter report and resolution. And first of all, budget, I want to quote George Washington, "We must consult our means rather than our wishes." It'd be nice if we lived in a world where we had unlimited resources, but of course we all know that we have limited resources and we have departments competing for those resources. So you, as the commissioners, set the policy, dictate the priorities, and help us, guide us in allocating the resources. What is a budget? A budget, I remember when a budget was a once-a-year necessary evil exercise in incrementalism. It's so much more than that now. It is a plan, a financial plan can be short or long term, and a budget is for one year and is the main building block of a long-term financial plan. It's a plan of operations, matches uses with sustainable sources, and even though a budget is cash basis, it does incorporate GAAP principles, generally accepted accounting principles, periodicity, consistency, continuity, some of those principles are implemented and followed when you're proposing the budget, when you're building a budget. A budget is dynamic and involves, allow room for change through bar adjustments. And we've all been in board meetings where we've submitted bar adjustments to you because we've had to pivot. We've, either we've had to reprioritize some of our expenditures, or we've received other income through grants that we weren't anticipating, and we have to do bar adjustments and send them up to DFA. And I threw this in here because the late, great Senator Frank Madler from Texas, twenty-one years ago, I did a budget presentation and I threw this slide in, and he was, he got the biggest kick out of this. And what it is, is it shows a CFO and probably the CEO sitting down, the CFO has his clipboard, and he says, "Our books are balanced, fifty percent of our numbers are real and fifty percent are made up." So we all know that accounting, finance, it's black and white, it's cut and dry, and this joke kind of refers to mixed light of that we have to account for every penny. Every penny should be accounted for, and in the spirit of transparency and fiscal responsibility, that's what we're looking forward to with Grant County going forward more than anything. We want transparency, we want to be informative, we want you to be able to rely on us, we want to provide you with financial data, we want to make things easier for you to make decisions. So going forward, that's our goal in Finance Department. Like I said, I wasn't trying to make light of anything or imply anything, I just, that joke, I just wanted to throw it in because I did get some feedback, and Senator Madler actually admitted to me afterward, that's the only thing he took from my presentation. Changes from the preliminary budget. I do want to preface these changes, I want to let you know that most of the changes from preliminary budget were either we had a placeholder for some of our grants and we entered the best possible number at the time, or we didn't feel comfortable. So what we did was we went up and true a bunch of the grants and entered as accurate data as we have. Obviously, a lot of our grants are federal, so they're on a different fiscal year than we are, they start October, run through September, but we, through the awards, through DFA, we did, were able to retrieve a lot of information and true up some of the grant income and then from there, the grant expenditures. So that is a lot of our changes from preliminary. And I also want to let you know that this year is going to be a challenging year. We are trying to reinvent how we do things with finance, and we're probably going to be coming to you a lot this year with budget adjustments. It's not because we want to occupy your time, we know time is a precious resource, but because we want to true up things, we want to make sure we're doing things with, again, the spirit of transparency and fiscal responsibility going forward. So it will require probably us coming back to you with budget adjustments periodically, and we want to keep you informed, you are the governing board, so we want you to be able to weigh in on any of the fiscal activity within the different funds. Some of the changes from preliminary budget, we added three hundred and twenty-one thousand two hundred and nineteen to four oh one dash zero zero dash forty eighty. This is the PILT award, we were able to increase it by three hundred and twenty-one thousand to a total of two point eight million because we were able to get final numbers on the award. So we just trued that one up. We added a hundred and forty-seven thousand three ninety-four to four oh one oh two five zero zero two. This is for the county managers, it's for two employees removed from part-time to full-time positions, and we also added a grants administrator to assist us with policy and internal controls along with grant administration. We added forty-six thousand zero seventy-two to four oh two fifteen five zero zero two for an additional road supervisor, and we also added the fire excise amounts to fund four oh six. Some of the other changes, we reduced four hundred thousand to four fifty-four dash zero zero forty-five eighty-four airport, and we reduced it due to occupation and activity has been reduced. We don't anticipate selling as much fuel, so the activity has decreased and the fuel usage should go down, so from preliminary to final, we wanted to kind of true that revenue up, and we wanted, in the spirit of fiscal conservatism, we didn't want to overestimate revenues based on the data that we had at the time, and the data does indicate that we will have less activity. I want to summarize the four funds, our revenue, our general operating for twenty-five is going to come in right above nineteen million, nineteen forty-one, four twenty-one. Our county road, our revenue is going to come in at one million forty-five, eight fifty. Our detention center, we're looking at one point two million, and our airport enterprise, we're looking at two point four million. And again, airport is an enterprise fund and the rest are governmental funds. And then, I'm kind of a visual person, so I did provide you with a graph, a pie graph, that just kind of summarizes our revenue, and you could see our largest chunk is all other departments other than the four, but our general operating is about thirty-eight percent, our county road is two percent, our jail's two percent, and again, our airport enterprise fund is five percent of total revenue. Our expenditures, we have general operating expenditures of roughly fourteen million, that's coming in at thirteen million eight nineteen oh thirty-nine. We have our county road at almost two million, one point nine. We have our detention center at four point one million, and our airport enterprise at two and a half million. And again, I'm a visual person, so I kind of like to see things visually. Our expenditures, expenses, general operating, account for about twenty-seven percent. Our county road is about four percent, jail is, detention center is eight percent, and then our airport enterprise is, let me see if I can, sorry about that, let me get that number for you. I apologize, I was cut off in the presentation. And that concludes my PowerPoint presentation, so I just want to give you the opportunity to ask us any questions or elaborate on any information.
Commissioner Brown?
Thanks very much for the report, thanks for the effort to make it painless, I'll try to be a partner in that. These, the numbers that you ended up with, especially the expenditures, these don't include the monies we receive, for example, county roads at less than two million, I'm thinking it doesn't include monies received from state and federal sources, is that right? This is just our portion?
That's just the operating, our portion. We do anticipate receiving state funding, and we do anticipate several projects for the county road department, so this is just the operating.
I mostly wanted to clarify that in case anybody's watching and they think, wow, we only spent two million on our roads, we need so much more, because we do need a lot. The actual number's going to end up being maybe ten times, something like that, that number, five times?
More along the lines of five.
Five.
Yes, you're right, that's just the general operating, and then all of the other funding falls in that other category, those grants.
Okay, and then if I could go back earlier, you described the increase in PILT, once we got that number nailed down from the feds. It looked like it went up by three hundred and twenty-one thousand, and then I couldn't really account for how that was spread out in expenditures. It looks like maybe a couple hundred thousand, assuming we did a transfer to four oh two, maybe a couple hundred thousand is described here as an increase. Where did the rest of that revenue get allocated?
So Chairman, Commissioner Brown, we don't take that increase and allocate it to specific lines, so we just know that that's the big part of the general fund revenue, and then it's just, it's just a source. We don't allocate that particular increase to any one particular line item or department, it is just a generalized source of revenue that funds all departments within the general fund.
But you do have to give the LGBMS machine a balance, right? You had to put it in somewhere so that, maybe I'm wrong, maybe you don't have to give it a balance?
We don't.
Because you can show carrier.
It's just.
I'm stuck in my old job. Okay, well, I guess the takeaway I get from that increase is that the one thing that I want, and when I said I'd be a partner in making it painless, I'm only going to ask for one thing, and that's what I've asked before, which is a position for implementing the Trails and Open Space Master Plan that we approved now quite some time ago. And if there were any question about whether we have funds, this seems to answer that question to me, I didn't have any question anyway, we do have funds. But I would like to see it included in the budget so that further down the line, we're not told, well, it's not in the budget, and that adds extra time and barrier for making this happen. So that's the one request I have, is that we had, say, a hundred thousand for that position. And with that, big y.
Commissioner Edwards?
I would support that as well.
Any other questions, Commissioner?
Yeah, Mr. Chair. Yeah, thank you, really appreciate your presentation and your experience, and welcome back to your home, and it's good to have you here.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
I've had several, for anybody else's knowledge, discussions with, I'm sorry, Robert?
Placentio.
Placentio.
I'm sorry, Commissioner, I've met the other commissioners, Commissioner Brown, my name is Robert Placentio.
Very nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you, I'm a native Silver City, and so it's great to be back in Grant County.
Welcome back.
Thank you.
Sorry for misplacing your last name, Mr. Placentio, but I've had several discussions with you, it sounds like you've really got some experience and knowledge, and it's welcome, your presentation was good. I do have questions similar to what Commissioner Brown was asking about the roads, and that would be, you know, the detention center is the same thing, so leaves me a little bit confused with, with the pie chart, you're saying we're, I mean, it gives the impression that we're spending eight percent of our budget at the jail or the detention center. I think it's way higher than that, so I guess all of the rest of the expenses is coming out of other, all other?
True.
So that's eight percent of our entire budget, and so when we look at, and when we plead our case to the state, when we talk about detention taking up thirty percent, it's of your general fund budget. So this comparison is of our budget overall, and one of the key things that, that really, whenever I looked at this picture, is the fifty-six percent of all the other things we do, and the majority of that fifty-six percent are grants, and so that just goes to show why we need that extra capacity, and when you look at that in the overall scheme of things, that's a lot. So that eight percent is of everything we do, from fire departments to roads to all of the grants we have, all of the airport stuff, the landfill, the dispatch, that is the whole big piece.
That gives me a much clearer picture, thank you, yeah. And as far as making changes today, I don't know if we all have our own wish list, I do mine, I'll hold it, and I'm not sure, you know, respectfully to Commissioner Brown, I mean, I have my own wish list too, and actually, I'll just blurt out one thing that's on the top of my mind, is, would be another code enforcement officer or capability there. I'm not sure that I want to monkey around with the budget today, but that would be a wish, and I'm not sure that we should even go there today with trails or budgets, I'm not suggesting that, but anyhow. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
We could do that in a bar, correct? So I have a follow-up question to what Mr. Billings said, so on the detention, like I totally get that the eight percent is of our total and the thirty-four percent is of our general fund, but we fund the detention center primarily out of general funds, correct? And so at some point in the reporting process, I think it's important for the public to understand that it really is thirty-four percent of our general fund, because that, to me, is a much clearer picture of what it's actually costing the county to run the detention center. So I don't know how we want to present that in the future, but I think it's an important distinction.
Commissioner Edwards, normally when I present budget data, I like to be real specific. Again, I want to thank Charlene and Ms. Metoya for really putting together, I've been here two and a half weeks, and they really put together, they did a lot of work on this, and they've really been helpful catching me up to how Grant County does things, so I want to thank them to getting us to this point. Normally, I do like to present data a little bit more in-depth, thus, we might have to break for lunch in a future board meeting, but I do like to present a little bit more in-depth, it's just we had problems with that outage with the, on Friday, I guess, the Microsoft outage, so we've just been really kind of scurrying to tie things up and put them up in a little ball. But going forward, I do want to provide financial reports that break it down by general fund, I want to break it down by grants, I want to break it down by debt service, so you have all that information, and you can look for that in future financial reports, and that'll be a monthly thing for the board meetings going forward.
That's great, and I would not in any way, shape, or form want any of our comments today to be misconstrued as critical, because I think we're all aware of how hard you guys have been working to get us to this point, and we deeply, deeply appreciate that hard work, and we appreciate the level of communication that has come out of the county manager's office from all of you about this, and so, yeah, not, not critical in any way, shape, or form.
Thank you.
Thanks.
So, Mr. Chair, maybe we could just make it a point to do, I agree with Mr. Billings that I think we probably should pass the budget today, but I do want us to have a discussion in the very near future about the things that have been brought up that we might want to look at with the PILT, because I really don't want us to pass up an opportunity to work on the Trails plan, and I definitely see the need for another code enforcement officer, so I think it would be really helpful to, in the not-too-distant future, to have a conversation around that.
Agreed. Got that? So we have a motion on the floor, do we have any further discussion? Okay, my motion was for resolution R dash twenty-four dash thirty-four, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Moving on to the next one, it's going to be consideration of resolution R dash twenty-four dash thirty-five, approving the June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four, fourth quarter financial
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion that we approve resolution number R twenty-four dash thirty-five as presented.
Second.
So a motion by Commissioner Edwards, second by Commissioner Billings, discussion?
Was there a presentation on this that I missed when I was in California?
No.
No, I would like to hear about it.
Yeah, I could ask questions, but hearing a presentation might be more effective.
We just have an overview of the fourth quarter report.
So you just want me to talk about the major funds, is that sufficient?
The what?
The major funds that we usually?
That's what we usually do?
Yes.
So you will see in the general fund, we started with beginning cash of six point seven million. The investment column is blank, this will be something that we're working with LGBMS, there's a glitch, it won't let us put that in, Andrea did run that, that report. Did you bring it with you? It's eighteen million-ish that goes, that would go in that, that column. We showed revenues of eighteen point four million, transfers out of a little, of four point zero two five million, expenditures totaling ten point four million, leaving an ending cash balance of ten point seven million. Our required reserves would be two point six, leaving an adjusted ending cash balance of eight point one million. In the road department, so the investments that will be plugged into that quarterly report are eighteen million seven hundred and seven thousand. And the county roads, beginning cash was four hundred and thirty-eight thousand, revenues of one point one, one point zero one million, transfers in from the general fund of eight hundred and forty-five thousand, total expenditures of one point eight million, ending balance of four hundred and ninety-one thousand, required reserves is a hundred and fifty thousand, leaving an adjusted cash balance of three hundred and forty thousand. Corrections, which would be fund two two six zero zero, beginning cash of nine hundred and ten thousand, revenues totaling one point two million, transfers in one point seven million, total expenditures two point four, ending cash balance of one point four five million. And do you want to talk about the airport? Usually, I don't think that's necessary. What I will preface with this report is we are waiting on some adjusting entries from our auditor, there is a process through DFA to make those adjusting entries, we are supposed to have those by close of business tomorrow, so that could, I think you understand what happens when you're waiting on adjusting entries. So that, that is still coming, and we're still figuring out our glitch to get those investments in that column.
Do you have a rough idea of what the adjusting entries will do to the balance?
I don't.
Okay.
Commissioner Brown? So just operating to very high level, it looks like we took in four million dollars more than we spent in the general operating fund, which is an unusually large number. Is there something that explains that?
Commissioner Brown, I wished at this point that between the three of us, we could explain that, but the manner in which things rolled up into the general fund has been a little difficult for us to track down, and we're to a point where we're as confident as we can be with what we have, and that's what we've put in front of you. I wished I could give you that explanation, but I can't.
You know, obviously, the good thing is it's.
It's in the right direction.
Right?
It's in the right direction.
Who's going to argue with that? But it does, again, speak to the fact that it looks at least, pending further information, potential bad news, it looks like we have the resources to do a lot of the things that we would like to do. I realize the staff capacity is stressed at the moment, but one of the things we want to do is increase staff to handle, you know, that stress, and I saw you, you know, you increased two positions from part-time to full, and you've added a grants administrator, and all those are great, and hopefully that allows us to continue to do more things, because it does look like the resources are there. Thank you.
Our property tax is trending the right way, our G O T has been trending in an upward tick and continues to be pretty solid, we're not seeing the dips that we have seen in the past, so, I mean, it's been trending that way for a couple of years, and I don't see any reason why that would, would change.
I agree.
I'm done.
Okay, so we have a motion on the floor, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Moving on to item C, consideration of resolution R dash twenty-four dash forty, budget adjustment request, amending FY twenty twenty-four approved budget.
Mr. Chairman, I should have caught you whenever you approved the agenda, we actually don't need this item, we put that on there in the event when we got the final quarterly, if there were some negative fund balances we needed to shore up, and that was not the case, so we don't have any final budget adjustments for you at this point, but when we get those adjusting entries, we'll be back. So we don't have any final budget adjustments for you at this point, but when we get those adjusting entries, we'll be back.
Sounds good, then we don't need it. And Commissioner Billings has a project for that one dollar we have in the yard, but flat out funds. We'll talk to him later about it, thank you. But, uh, is that it then? Okay, commission reports, Commissioner Medina?
Um, the only thing I got is that, um, I had the opportunity to be out this weekend with the, in the Skates Canyon area for the Mangus Bowman shoot. Um, our own Michelle Moronis puts a lot of effort, or Michelle-
Minyos.
Minyos puts a lot of effort in that thing. I saw her riding a four-wheeler with an elk in the back and a deer and a pig and amazing work that her and her husband did. Um, I walked around the shoots a couple of times and you got these little kids, five, six-year-olds, with these little bows shooting at these animals. It was, it was really interesting to see and I just wanna tell her thank you for, for that and, and her family and, and all the effort they put into this. There were so many shooters out there and it was really a good time. Um, that's all I got. Oh, and with the HMS, uh, having their grand opening in the Members Clinic, August first. Um, you put invitations out to everybody or the weekend invitations?
I got them.
HMS sent those out directly and-
Okay, perfect.
Um, we'll have a notice of quorum posted in the event that there's a quorum being presented.
Perfect, thank you, that's all I have.
Can we clarify, does, does anybody know, is it at nine or ten?
Um, nine o'clock, everyone.
Everyone I've asked says, yeah, either nine or ten.
Nine AM.
Nine AM.
Commissioner Billings, do you have a report?
Uh, yeah, my excuse for being late to the meeting today was I was on the phone with yet another constituent who shares our concern that, um, about the junkyards. And so, uh, I, we have an assurance, I just wanna let the public know and anyone else know, we have an assurance from Manager Webb, probably that's the, I'm not sure, somewhere in my email. We're gonna press forward on this, we're not gonna, uh, lose ground. And, um, I'll have some questions at next month's meetings, uh, that constituencies have asked me, I think that's August sixth and the eighth, is that, that's our meeting day? And so, um, I'll try to get with the manager. In the meantime, express some of the concerns that people have had and, uh, the problems that they've had. Uh, we're, I think we're aware of most of it, but just, um, you know, just reiterate that it's time for us to clean up these huge messes that is especially in the compact, um, housing areas where you've got neighbors right next door and they're at risk from, um, fire or nuisance or their property values. And these junkyards seem to be growing, not shrinking. And it'd be nice if we could turn that around and kinda clean up Grant County and, uh, not have another event like the rodeo thing, uh, that we had and, and the mess that that is. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, just a question on the, um, what are we doing right now as far as code enforcement?
Right now, we will be relying on the sheriff's office. Um, the sheriff has indicated that they are willing to help us. Um, it is called out in the ordinances that they are other option. Um, I have a pile on my desk I need to discuss with you. And, um, also, uh, Roger and Scott can also provide some of those resources for us as well. Um, they're very well-versed in all of our ordinances, I'm going to use them as a resource. You know, the sheriff's, the sheriff's office is extremely busy and I don't want to clog up, um, his staff with code enforcement. So we will take a two-pronged approach, um, and utilize all the staff we can to just keep moving forward. I don't wanna let it just be stagnant and just because we have an employee out, so we'll keep working on it.
Cause I think, you know, all our commissioners have been getting calls about these yards. And I know I've gotten calls, especially yesterday, Silver Acres area and stuff, so we need to figure some out. We appreciate you, Sheriff, for, for doing that, but they do have legitimate concerns.
Mr. Chair.
They're getting calls and they do have legitimate concerns. Is that good for me?
I just thought of something else related. Bring my- Yeah, so Sheriff, good to see you here today. And I don't know if you can help with this or not, but there's another constituent that's contacted and I don't even know whose constituent she is, but, um, she's a Grant County citizen who's spent a lot of time picking up trash in Grant County, done great efforts.
She's my-
Do you know who she is?
She's yours?
Okay. And she's concerned about the trash along Ridge Road on the way to the dump. And I don't know if we can, I don't know if that's exclusively the sheriff that can, department that can issue those citations when people are going in there with their truck uncovered and got some trash blowing out, or if the county can do something about that. But that's the question I'd like to bring up.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Mr. Commissioners.
Uh, that is something that we can enforce. Uh, we try to get up there as much as possible, but I have talked to some individuals and assured them that we will do everything we can to help with that situation. We can cite for unsecured loads and, and possibly littering. Uh, a lot of times they get to the dump before we catch them when they get reported, so. But I'm, I'm focusing on setting up an operation up there where we're just gonna sit up there and watch. And as they pass by, we'll take, take action as needed. Cause we do need to, uh, put a stop to what's been happening, not just up going to the dump, but on the highways as well. Um, you see trash flying out of vehicles and that. And, and I'm very thankful to the individuals that go out and do the highway cleanup. We need to help them as well in regards to that, because it, it does make our county not look good. And we, we can't take action. It's just trying to focus on it with the call ratio that we have right now and covering other municipalities. It kinda puts a damper on projects that I wanna concentrate heavily on, so. But we're, we're headed that direction and I assure the committee, we will do everything in our power to get it done.
Do you know what the current fine is? Is that a state stat, state statute or is it a local? Is it a Grant, a Grant County statute and what the fine is for that? For-
As far? No.
Well, I, I think it's for littering, it's the three hundred dollars demeanor standard in statute, but the, uh-
Unsecured load?
The unsecured load is a city thing and the landfill and it's five dollars. I mean, um, the constituent that spoke to us last month was exactly right. Why should I go buy a TARP that costs more than five bucks? I'll just pay the five bucks. So I, I think that's a conversation we could have with the city that maybe that needs to be a little bit more-
It's, it's not the city, i- i- you know, it's the Southwest Solid Waste Authority. And, uh, you have the conversation with Alex Brown, but also other members of the authority. I, I have said from the beginning that five dollars wasn't enough. And every year when we reapprove that, I say it's not enough. So as you're representative on that authority, I, I have argued for a higher fine. And I'm really glad it's getting some attention, because for some reason, my fellow colleagues don't wanna increase that.
Yeah, so a TARP and, and the work to put a TARP on probably costs-
Twenty.
Ten times that, yeah.
You know, the sad part is by the time they get to the land, landfill, they get the five-dollar fine, they've already thrown all their trash on the highway, so.
Sometimes.
I, I don't know what, what that is, but I think it was yesterday or the day before. Yesterday, I saw a lady, uh, cleaning up, you know, the trash on the highway. And then this morning, coming in, we're back at the same, same square it was when she started. So, yeah, we need to figure some out.
Well, I would just chime in with, it's all very well and good for us to figure out how to do that. But the reality is, is people just need to stop throwing trash on the ground. You know, what the hell?
If I have a habit of throwing trash out, I don't think I've ever had that habit. But if I did, I'm thinking, what would it take to help me change my habit? And I think a significant fine. So I used to go around without my seatbelt on, this was quite a while ago. I got four fifty-dollar tickets within a period of about six months. And I start, I finally started wearing my seatbelt. And I think that's what it takes with this is, you know, if you, if someone goes to court two or three times for having an uncovered load and has to pay two hundred dollars or whatever it is, they'll stop uncovering their load and pretty soon we'll have less trash to pick up. That's just my opinion.
Nobody's ever talked to you about the Fifth Amendment, self-incrimination.
You're right.
But it's not just about the dump, it's about people, I see people all the time. You know, they throw trash in the back of their pickup and then it blows out on the road, you know? I see people throwing it out their car window, you know?
Or the sad part is you go to a store park, somebody throws something back there in your truck or, and then you're driving and all of a sudden you see something flying out, you're like, what was that?
So it's, it, I agree, it's a fine that's substantial enough to, like, not have people say, well, why bother? But it's also, I think, uh, an issue of personal responsibility.
Exactly. So the county can't really pass an ordinance, this is gonna have to go back to the Solid Waste Authority?
For, for that uncovered load one?
Yeah.
Not for lit, for littering, that's a different matter.
Right.
So, Mr. Brown, as the representative on that committee, if there was an official, uh, request by the commission in the form of a letter or a resolution or something like that, asking for something different, would that make a difference?
Possibly. Uh, I mean, I don't think they would doubt me if I just told them that we had a discussion and commissioners appeared unanimously to support increasing that.
Substantially.
Yeah, I mean, if you wanted to put a number on it, then maybe you wanna have a real discussion in the resolution. But if you wanna just-
Well, let's start with, I think we're unanimous, right? We want it, the fine to be higher? If you start with that and it doesn't go anywhere, then come back to us.
Right.
I suspect that we would pass a resolution that would ask if we could do something different.
The mayors of the, uh, mining district municipalities are also on that authority. Give them a call if you know them, urge them to do, to support that.
Thank you.
Done.
Thanks.
Commissioner Brown, comment?
Yeah, uh, since we're on the subject of trash, uh, every third Saturday, there's a Tasmo Mass event. And, uh, I did it this last month. Um, it's definitely not just the dump. My people put trash everywhere and a great way to get familiar with how this works is to, to go every month or every other month and spend a couple hours picking up. You don't have to do it in the town, it's a town initiative, uh, through Mary Ladner. But they'll encourage you to go wherever you think there's stuff to be picked up. Uh, and you can come back and, you know, add to the total of trash collected. Uh, we filled the back of my truck, the back of another truck and a whole trailer in the course of two hours from PA Creek near the new rec center. There's, there's a ton of trash out there to be picked up. So every third Saturday, feel free to come to the Office of Sustainability on Pope Street near Golf Park and you can get gloves and trash pickers and bags. And then bring your trash back and they will take it to the landfill for you. Uh, see, I wanted to mention the, the hospital had a positive event. I saw Commissioner Medina there, I didn't stay for the whole thing, so others may have arrived. But what great news after, I think, two decades that we have new, uh, labor delivery recovery rooms.
A woman's center.
Yep, a woman's center.
A woman's center.
So that was, uh, that was a real positive event that the hospital held. Um, and I think I just wanna mention on the trails issue, one reason why this was fresh in my mind this morning is that yesterday we had a, a town trails and open space committee meeting and I'm on that committee. Um, and, uh, we had a, a call in from Continental Divide Trail Coalition. Spent forty-five minutes talking about issues related to how the town, which is the first gateway community to that trail, uh, is, you know, gonna try to connect better to the trail itself. And one of the question was, questions that, that we were asked as a committee, well, do you guys know what's happening with the county's trail and open space master plan? And I felt kind of embarrassed that I had to say, I don't really think there's been any progress. We've asked for reports from the collaborative, the Southwestern New Mexico Collaborative. And I, I don't think I've heard anything from them either. So it really was on my mind that, that I need to be able to, to tell these folks that we're moving forward in some way. So, thank you, that's it for me.
Thank you, Commissioner Brown, Commissioner Edwards?
I have nothing, thank you.
You know, um, it's my allergies and I just wanna apologize to my constituents that I didn't get to that public hearing yesterday evening. Uh, but I'm sure, uh, Ms. Montoya there will brief me and, and hopefully everything all right. That was on the, uh, lights, so, uh-
I went there-
Did you?
At seven fifteen, cause it said it was from six to eight. Parking lot was entirely empty.
Was it?
And I called, I called the woman, said, what happened? She said, well, we finished in fifteen or twenty minutes and left. Anyway, I was a little peeved at the fact that they said six to eight and it wasn't true.
Okay, so I'm taking it that there wasn't much participation?
No, and it only, it lasted about thirty minutes. And there's a PowerPoint from Mrs. Evans that I asked her to send over so you could also have all the information that was there. But total, it didn't go past forty minutes and, um, the residents were happy with the outcomes that were discussed there regarding, um, sorry, the outcomes regarding whether they were going to put in the median in Arenas Valley, which that's not happening, um.
So that's a lot of the pushback I got was, was that, that median part? I mean, everybody, all people I've talked to, you know, Arenas Valley Road, Kirkland Road, um, all these roads are, you know, at night and then all the deer that are crossing, they, they want those lights, but they really don't want that center part messed with. So, that's good, thank you for going.
I have a list of updates for you, I wrote down in my notebook, so, um, it's, Charlene has a lot of the information too, so.
Thanks.
You're welcome.
That's all I have.
That's Chair's only. So I'm sorry, I, I forgot this. Um, about a week and a half, two weeks ago, there was a proposal brought to the planning and zoning in Bayard for a SOS-type shelter in a residential neighborhood. And the residents gathered, they got a petition together and got a hundred and fifty signatures and over just the span of a couple of hours, that they did not want the SOS shelter in that residential area. And, um, I just wanna let, you know, the residents have stood their ground and I'm really happy for them. And in the outcome of the, of the planning and zoning meeting, I was really happy that they stood their ground. And I got multiple phone calls on it. Sheriff, you probably got multiple calls on it as well. And I just wanted to tell them I was really happy that they, that they stood their ground to, to discipline.
What's SOS?
It's like a spin shelter, like the, the one that's here in the, in the area here in Silver.
Homeless shelter.
Yeah, it's a very similar, similar type shelter. That's all I got.
Any other commissioners have anything else? Okay, meetings adjourned.